If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate and just.
Call the roll, all of our board members are present tonight. And our varsity boys basketball team tonight is playing a playoff game against Methacton, which I hear the score is 39-28, so if we can just have a moment of silence to send our best wishes towards PV tonight. Amen. With that, we'll move on to our presentations.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Dr. Ramage to come up, he's gonna give us an update on the Dial implementation.
Good evening, everyone, we thought it would be timely to bring some of our students forward tonight, talk about some of the things that they've been doing so far with our iPad with the Dial One-to-One Initiative here at the middle school. Again, I know Mr. Wagman has mentioned this many times, but this is primarily a learning initiative, and I'm very proud of our staff as we've been digging into professional development and working with an Apple Coach and collaborating in our PLCs, we're really making those connections to our units of study and trying to expand and enhance what's going on. So I have Mrs. Christine Henry, who's a sixth grade teacher, and she is our district lead tech teacher, so she helps a lot of faculty here at the middle school and has been working with some of our students, you'd rather hear from them than me anyway. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Henry and some of our students this evening.
I have brought an eighth grade rep, two seventh grade reps, and a sixth grade rep, and what they are going to show you tonight is the different apps that they have used in the classroom, because I know the stigma right now is that, oh, we only bring the iPads home and we play games on them, and they are not, they do play the games, but they are learning, and the stuff that they are doing is fabulous at this point. So the first person I'm going to have represent us is our eighth grade rep, and that is Fox, and he is going to show you different things that are done in a language arts classroom right now and a social studies classroom.
This is ChatterPix, and it's an app. This is ChatterPix, and it is an app where you can add movement through mouths and speech to any picture that you choose, whether it's on the app already or any of the pictures that are in your library, you can add decals, borders, filters, and you can create it and personalize it in any way you want. This one I made is about the Pythagorean theorem, and should play. It's not playing. Alright, it's, it's, oh. Should be playing. Well, it's not working right now. Oh, no, now it decides to work. So, the whole concept is that through using this, you can immerse students by, you can, we used it in social studies for summarizing our outlines, so what we do is we write a summary down on the paper and then we'd have a sort of a competition where we'd split up into groups and we'd each make a ChatterPix for it, and then we'd compare them and share them to each other by downloading them to our devices, and then we could email them to each other, we'd just pass around the iPads. And once you finish with it, you can always go back to it in the gallery, so you can always have it on your iPad on the app. And then the other one is ComicMaker, and that's a comic I made, and I made this for language arts to show text structure, and what you can do is you can put text in, so you can put any sort of text boxes you want, you can also put images such as fonts and backgrounds as well as characters that are already in the database in this app, as well as using any of your own pictures. You can also, when you're finished with it, email it or post it to Facebook, which is pretty great if I was on Facebook. And it's set up almost like a PowerPoint, because you can change how the slides are arranged in order with each other, and you can also change how the pictures are compared to each other, that you can stick pictures in front of each other. And you can also select how you want the slides to be formatted, they can look more like a comic book, and you can also take pictures on your iPad and put them on, because I took that picture for my project. Any questions?
These apps or anything else?
You get to express yourself, is what I really like about it, so you can sort of let a bit of whatever you think about out and show it to other people through sort of a different way of expressing yourself.
Remember to use your microphone.
Thank you.
The next two are my seventh grade reps, Mackenzie and Faith, and they are going to show you one science app that they use, which is called iCell, and then another app that is called Inspiration, which can be used in all core subjects, as well as any other subject.
The first app we're gonna be talking about is Inspiration, and we could, well, we use this for math and language arts so far, it can keep track of your notes, create projects, and track your vocabulary, and Faith is going to show you like a thing, like a model she made of an inspiration, and what is that on? She made one about language arts class, and you can also put it into outline form, so show them. And then that's math class, we used it for our vocabulary and to track like our examples on our vocabulary.
Another app we have is the Flashcard app, and it's used for vocabulary, we've used it in science for our cell organelles and structures, you can have multiplayer games where you can go up against each other to see who can get the most answers correct, this helps us to remember our vocabulary, and it will, it lets us practice our vocabulary.
The next app we'll be using is iCell, and this lets us see like the actual plant cell and animal cell and also bacteria cells, so can you flip to the nucleus one? It also defines the cell organelles that we are studying for, and yeah.
As you can see, in seventh grade, iPads are not just a toy, they're learning devices. We use them for instructional time and we also use them to help us out of school. iPads are a privilege and a novelty to have in school.
The one thing I want to emphasize with Inspiration Lite that the girls did not is that, what is really neat, is that if a child is more of an abstract and is very good with making webs, they can make the word and make the words go off it to add definitions or add examples to it, but if someone is more in an outline, linear, such as myself, they could make the web, push a button, it automatically puts it into the outline format for them. If they're one that wants to do the outline and then see how it would look like in a web, it pushes the button and it changes it to the web. So it's multipurpose, it's good for different types of learners. And next person I'm bringing up is Tori, she's a sixth grader, and what she is going to show you is how the calendar is used as an organizational tool for students and their homework, as well as Flubberoo that is used for an assessment piece.
For the calendar, you can usually keep track of what you do, but mainly for us kids in sixth grade, we use them to see our assignments that we will be doing later on in class, or what we have for homework. As you can see, I have my four academical classes and my health class assignments up, but the only way to get them to show up on your calendar is to subscribe, and what you first have to do is pick a teacher. I will pick my FACS teacher, Mrs. Fritz. What you have to do is go under their calendar, whoops, and on the top right-hand corner of the calendar, you'll see a green button and it says iCal. You have to click on it, and then where you see a URL link, you, uh, thank you, hold it down and copy it, then you have to go under your settings, where under mail, contacts, and calendars, you will press add account, then you have to paste down the URL link and it will show up, and once you go under your calendar, your assignments will show up. The calendar is a very, very easy way, we don't always use it, use it, and it may not be a way to learn, but it's a way to keep track of what you have to do, instead of keep going under your teacher's directory and having to press all those buttons and wait for it to load, just going under your app, it's an easier way, and if you click on one of your teachers, the description for that assignment will show up to explain to you what you have to do. My second app is Flubberoo. Flubberoo is a way for teachers to grade kids' assignments, like their quizzes and tests, and it's an easy way for us to get our answers right away, they show you your correct answers and your incorrect answers, what points you lost and what points you earned. As you can see on my science test, I got them all correct except one, this just, yeah, I know. So I got two questions wrong, well, three. Don't tell Mrs. Adelman, don't tell Mrs. Adelman. So it shows you the question and shows you what the real answer is, and yes, again, it's not one of those other ones where you can learn, but it shows you your mistake and what it should have been, and for like upcoming big tests, it's another way for you to study instead of just knowing what you did wrong without knowing what it should have been. Thank you, any questions? Thank you.
The students are also creating iBooks, so I have Abby, who is a seventh grade gifted student, some of the iBooks that are being created are made for those students that might be a struggling student, so we have our enrichment students working with Mrs. Frasca, and they're creating units of study, and the one nice thing about iBooks, you pick up a paperback book, they're boring as all heck, so you turn around, you make an iBook, an iBook, you can embed videos, you can embed quizzes, you can, it makes it so interactive and so engaging, so I'm gonna turn this over to Abby to show the iBook she created in seventh grade as a collaborative assignment.
So this iBook is pretty long, so I'm probably just gonna scroll through it and show you some of the things on it, there are five of us who worked on this, and they are all in seventh grade, we all worked on this individually on different computers, and last week we put them all together, so this is my section, and this is on some of the organelles in the cell, and then the next section, which is the chemical compounds in a cell, is by Zachary Lewski, and he, alright, you can see there are some quizzes and these are some articles and just informations and links to other websites. Then in the next section, we have Photosynthesis and Respiration by David Rabenowitz, and he had a lot of pictures and some interactive images and a lot of information, you can also click on some pictures and they will show up bigger. Then the next section is by Simon Lapik, and it's on meiosis and mitosis, and there are quizzes and just little like, what are you gonna learn in each section, a lot of pictures, and it's just a fun and interactive way to read a book. Any questions? Thank you.
The last app that I'm going to show you is called Adobe Reader, and what this one is really good with is for all subjects, in the aspect that you can talk to the text, and that's really emphasized with the Common Core and understanding the information. So I know I've taken the opportunity and to upload the sixth grade and seventh grade textbooks, the social studies textbooks, because unfortunately, they are not iPad compatible, but we were able to get permission from the company and upload it as a PDF. With that being said, the students have the ability using this app with the tools that are accessible to be able to highlight, to actually be able to write comments into it, so anybody who has a sixth grade student in my class next chapter, instead of on Google Docs and answering their questions, what I'm actually going to require them to do is highlight where they found the answer, and they are now going to write their, write the question right on the textbook, so it's all in one-stop shop, so instead of just regurgitating and saying a one-word answer, highlight it completely, put the question there, and then you know where that information is. And I know a lot of teachers are already using that app, this is one of the most used apps already in the middle school. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Ramage.
I wanna thank our presenters, and I also, maybe you noticed this, but we had a tech lesson from a seventh grader, okay, they are the experts in what's going on, and I could stand and tell you, well, they talked about Marzano's non-linguistic representation, and they talked about multiple modalities of learning, but I also heard things like, well, it's not really a learning thing, but we do this and this and this, in other words, this is the language of our kids, one author calls them digital natives, and this is just the way they're used to learning and interacting and engaging, and one of the most powerful things has just been giving them tools that are in their language. I still like textbooks, it's okay to read a book, too, we do that, too, but even the example here with the PDF, it's so much more powerful to be able to mark up the book instead of get the phone call at the end of the year, "Dr. Ramage, I just wanna let you know, your daughter wrote in seven pages in this textbook, so you owe us $38," you know, it's not, they had, they can actually engage with their text in new ways because of the tools as well, so thank you for supporting the initiative, we look forward to even more ways to embed that and engage our kids and improve learning in the district.
I have a question, actually, Mr. Wagman might be the one to answer it, that iCal calendaring app, can I subscribe to my assignments?
Yes. Excellent. And then the comment is just, I am just so impressed, the native technical stuff for you kids is expected because you've grown up with it, but your presentation skills and your poise in front of this audience and this room is exceptional, and I just wanna compliment you all for doing a really great job.
Thank you, and thank you to our student presenters and Mrs. Henry, we appreciate you coming out. At this point, we're gonna move on to the second piece of our report, and Mr. Faulkner is here to make a presentation.
If I could, could I have Mr. Wagman come up, and also any and all of those present that are involved with the robotics programs here at the middle school and the high school? Are you involved?
I am representing Mrs. Frasca, she is at Peck and C tonight.
Which is the state technology conference.
Yes.
Correct. I wanna mention that the majority of the work that went involved into this was not from myself, but actually through Michael Wagman. I presented the administration to give me some materials to present to my coworkers, to help raise or ask for volunteers to present and give their $250 grant that each Bentley employee is eligible for each year to Potts Grove School District this year. So he did a great letter with some information about our high school robotics program as well, and through that, I was able to recruit 23 employees, and at $250 apiece, that's $5,750, I'd like to present to you guys, that's to be used however you can this year with your robotics program, hopefully it comes in good use. I will again ask next year for the same material, and if we have a better reason to use our STEM grant next year, that's great, if not, we can continue to use it within the robotics program, I think all of my employees that I recruited were very impressed and glad that it's going to a good cause, I mean, I do work for an engineering firm, so robotics is right in that field, a lot of them could relate to it. I do wanna mention, and this goes to the administration and all of the other people in the audience here, the one thing I did find interesting this year with trying to get more people, my own employees in our company, was I found there was a lack of knowledge of how bad the education system needs funding, I mean, I, there were some employees that I had to really twist their arms to wanna give their money to anybody, and I'm like, you gotta realize how bad the situation is out there, and believe it or not, it's probably more with the younger generation and not the older generation that has had kids go through the school system, so if you've graduated, I'm gonna say college in the last five years maybe, or 10 even, that generation just doesn't realize what the need is yet, so we as school representatives and parents in the community, if you see any of those, that generation, please impress upon them what the needs are out there, because I'm sure there are many employees at my company that did not give their grant to anybody, I wasn't able to get to those people in time, but I'll try to reach out to more of them next year. Thanks a lot again, Michael.
Thank you so much.
And you're welcome.
Thank you, Dave, and your coworkers for their generosity.
I would like to add, out of those 23 employees, the school does a great job of sending thank you letters out to those employees, but there was, we had two employees that weren't from even Tennessee, one was from Maine and one was from Wisconsin, so I thought it was gracious of them to, you know, give their money to where they felt was needed more.
Forty-six, forty-four.
End of the third quarter?
We'll wait till the game's over, we'll testify.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner, for your generosity and your dedication to recruiting that money for us. We wanted to add one other item this evening, it's come to my attention that there's some confusion about the grading practices committee in our work, and I thought it best to try to take a little time to explain to the board, I know we were late in our meeting the last time when this topic surfaced, so people were probably ready to go home, but I thought it best to just reiterate the plan that we spoke about last April. Michael, you might have to remind me about this clicker, never mind, I think I got it, okay? Just to bring you back and put this in context, we established an action plan within the 2013-2017 district comprehensive plan that included grading practices, and this really goes hand in hand with standards alignment. And just to pictorially show that to you, keeping student achievement in the forefront in everything that we do, when the Common Core, the PA Core was adopted, in turn, we needed to focus on curriculum revisions, so part of our comprehensive plan began with revisions to our curriculum to ensure that we were aligned to standards, to the standards adopted by the state. Then, we continued that work with alignment of instructional practices and reflection about those practices and ensuring that the practices we're using were aligned with the curriculum. Lastly, or the third piece to this, is aligning the reporting practices, and that's the piece that we haven't yet completely tackled, we started the work, but part of this is to further that work. And in the midst of this, last April, the board voted to convert to a 10-point scale by the fall of 2015, and at the time, we reiterated our need to design consistent district-wide processes, and the fact that we felt that we needed time to do this thoughtfully, to thoughtfully implement, otherwise, we're just masking the problem, if you just change a grading scale, you're just really, it's not really doing anything until you clearly identify the practices of the teachers and ensure there's consistency across classrooms, which is one of the things that we had set out to do with our comprehensive plan alignment, we just weren't there yet, and we wanted that time as we moved forward. So the board did grant us some time, because they gave us this entire year to start that process, knowing that we weren't gonna completely finish that work, but we were gonna do our best to get a lot of the work done this year. So with that, that's where this grading committee came from, we established a grading committee, I told you last year that we needed to get the educators, the people that are in this day in and day out, involved in this conversation, because you wanna bring your stakeholders along and ensure that we have, you know, a common language among us as we move forward. So the purpose of, and some of the dates I have up here are just some of the dates we've been meeting, there's also subcommittee work going on, there's a lot of work that the teachers have dedicated their time to, and our administrators as well. The purpose of this work, you can see up there, is to study effective grading practices, study the research, study the literature, and one of the first things we set out to do is define the purpose for grading, why are we grading, what is our purpose, what, how do we wanna communicate that best to our parents and to our students, and come up with a consistent statement about that. Secondly, we're looking to try to gain consistency in a K-12 system, and our objectives are to provide specific, accurate, fair, and timely feedback for students, and we wanna make sure that we're ensuring that we're measuring learning, and also, in, when you take something on of this magnitude, you wanna ensure that you have professional development, which is what PD stands for, for a broader stakeholder group, so that it's not just a small group of people that understand this, but we want to broaden that, and because of the fact that we have over 250 teachers, you know, that takes time, you wanna just slowly have these conversations and ensure that everyone's understanding and on the same page. Just to give you a little bit of where we are right now with this committee, the committee has done some great work, and we've tried to articulate a purpose for grading, and we believe that there's going to be And we believe that there's going to be some variation among our grading practices, among levels. But we do all believe in our small committee that the primary purpose is to measure student achievement and to clearly communicate that to our parents and to our students, because we want to be providing feedback. And we also want to ensure that we're not, we're not judging students based on another student's progress, but rather, we set a criterion, we set, we set an objective for students to achieve, and we measure them based on that objective. Not in comparison to others, but based on a criterion. So those are some things that we, that we as a committee believe, and we're about to take some steps to broaden that understanding to our larger teacher stakeholder group. Additionally, as we've been studying, I think we can, we can agree that we've seen some, quite some variations among classrooms. And we're learning from each other that it's not, it's really more about what we're accustomed to. What we grew up as children experiencing when we were students in the classroom has carried over into what we've been doing as professionals, because that's what we were exposed to. But that's not necessarily in line with what the research says is good practice. So we're having conversations among ourselves to try to ensure that we agree on what it is we feel is best for the students of the Potts Grove School District. Some of the things that we've learned thus far in reviewing the research is some of the things that I have up on the screen, that oftentimes we're distorting, if we aren't careful in how we select the assessment criteria, we could distort achievement. In other words, if we're weighting homework too heavily, we could, in essence, skew a student's grades so that they're getting a higher grade, but really, when it comes down to it, they might not know the material. They've done the homework, it doesn't mean it's all accurate, and it doesn't ensure that they've comprehended the material. So we have to be careful of that. We want to ensure that, you know, we want to give students credit for trying, the effort and the persistence that they put into things. We want to be able to report to a parent, you know, your kid really tries hard. He works hard every single day. But we also want to be clear to parents that, did they or did they not meet that criterion for that skill that we were attempting to teach? And we want to be clear in the way that we articulate this to parents and to students, so students understand. And we don't want to set students up for failure later. We want them to know, we want them to understand whether they know the skills or they don't know the skills. So those are some of the things that we're learning. We're also learning a little bit about effective practices, that we want to make sure that we're clear in what we use as the criterion. We want to appropriately use a calculation that's appropriate, that doesn't skew the score one way or another. And we want to use grading in assessment procedures that support learning. For each of these controversial and complex issues, there needs to be an understanding of best practice, time for discussion, and time for our teachers to talk about what will work and what won't work, what's been past practice, and what we might want to do moving forward to ensure that we're doing our best for our students. And that takes time, and then we want to try to come to consensus. We're not going to be, we're not going to all have the exact same ideals, but we want to draw in some consistency so that you know that if your child is in one math class and goes into another math class, of the same course, that essentially, you know, they're, they're learning and being assessed in the same way. And we know what they, what they know and are able to do when they walk out of that course or that classroom. I know there's been a lot of talk about traditional grading versus standards-aligned grading, and people are a little bit leery of the word "standards-aligned" or "standards-based grading." But really, what it comes down to is just ensuring that we're being fair and that our assessment practices match what we're teaching. Because right now, we're trying to put a round peg in a square hole, particularly at the elementary level, because our curriculum is aligned to standards, our instructional practices are aligned to standards, but our assessments aren't necessarily aligned to standards. So when parents see them on a report card, it's really difficult to interpret what it is they know and are able to do. So that's one of the things that we want to achieve in this. And we're not going to be able to achieve that completely this year. That's, but that's something we're talking about as part of this committee, because this committee's work will then guide us in moving forward to put that grade report together. And I'm going to show you an example in just a minute, just so, so that you understand what I'm speaking about. At the secondary level, like I said before, it's more about consistency. It's more about, as we go from sixth grade to seventh grade, all the way up to 12th grade, that we have some common understandings and common agreement among, you know, how much homework should be counted and how much effort should be counted, so that there's consistency in classrooms, okay? That's what we're talking about with this committee. The committee's to-do, so here's another, just, here's another slide that talks a little bit about grading, traditional versus standard-aligned. And we're not saying that we want to jump completely all the way to the, the total end of standards alignment. What we're trying to do is bring clarity to this process and, and help our kids and help our parents so that we're truly doing them not a disservice by not telling them how they're truly achieving. Now, here's some of the to-dos, in layman's terms, in our terms, of what we're working on. Determining components of final grades, talking about late work, talking about missed work, and how much time do you get to make up missed work, talking about extra credit, talking about the use of zeros and incompletes, and you can see course weighting, and also characteristics of a successful learner. How should we report homework? How should we report effort? How should we report participation to a parent and to a child so that they know how they're doing? Those are the conversations that we're having. If you could look in your packet, and I apologize, I don't have a slide for this, but I can speak to it. There's a misconception out there about standards-aligned grade reporting and that it, that it's ineffective and it provides students with an easy A. But really, what we believe, it's going to provide more detail and more clarity for parents. And in your packet, there are three things. Well, there are actually a couple more, but there's a letter here that you can see that I've written to staff back in November that talks about what we're doing, talks about our timeline, and it clearly says basically what I just said to you in the, in the last five minutes about what we're trying to accomplish. There's a little chart that shows the difference between traditional and standards-aligned grading, so that you can, you can understand that a little bit. But what I want you to look at right now is our current elementary report card, okay? And it says, "Potts Grove School District Report Card, Grade III, Lower, Lower Potts Grove Elementary." And you can compare this to the Wissahickin report card. And this is just an example of one standards-aligned grade reporting system. And most districts that have done this well, they, first of all, they have different reporting for each trimester or each quarter. Because at a particular quarter in the year, students are learning different concepts and skills. So at the end of that time period, we want to report out to parents on those concepts and skills. And then we move on to the next quarter, we're reporting out on something different. So ours stays the same all year, and it's very generic. But you can see Wissahickins has the actual standards-aligned skills listed. So for example, under mathematics, you can see numbers and numeration. Ours just has numbers and numeration. Are they approaching, beginning, exceeding, or meeting? Wissahickins actually breaks it down into the actual skills that they are actually learning at that particular time, quarter, or trimester, I'm not sure what they're on, in those skills broken down under numbers and numeration, and then, and numbers and operation. And then it goes on to all of the other standards that they're learning in that grade level. That's what we're going for, okay? It's not, it's not something that's too radical. It's just giving parents more information. Another piece that we're trying to achieve, and you can see this from the Boyertown example, is perhaps putting together "I can" statements, so that a parent and a student can see, "I can, I can do X," or "I can do Y." These are the skills that the student is trying to achieve at that particular grade level for those, for those standards. And we will want to publish something like this to show our parents and show our students where are they in achieving those, those skills and concepts. So this is, in a nutshell, what the elementary level is trying to do. The secondary level right now is tackling some of those other things that I talked to you about. How much should homework count, and how much should effort and participation? Because we're probably not going to get to a point where we say we don't count those at all. That's, that's just typically not what you see in a secondary environment with, with a culture of a table full of us that have experienced this all our lives with homework and effort and participation. But what we can do is probably do a better job of explaining that to parents and you, and use that to a lesser degree so as not to skew the actual achievement, because we want to present the achievement to the parent and to the student. So that, that's what I, I wanted to make sure that was clearly understood. And the timeline that's up there, this is what we agreed to last April when the board voted to change the scale. I asked for more time, and we came to consensus on this timeline. This is what I published to the teachers, as you can see in that letter that's in your packet there. And where we are with this right now is working through it. And our teachers are, are, on the committee, are talking about, well, how do we get this out to a broader audience? How do we bring more people on, okay? So one of the things is, as you know, I've invited a key communicator group, which is some of our parent stakeholders, along with board members, to a workshop next week to understand this in a little bit more detail, because it's very hard to do this in five or 10 minutes, because this is something that we study over hours. But we're going to take about an hour and a half and really talk about that. We've been doing that with our small teacher group, and then that small teacher group has been going out to one-hour meetings at each of the levels and broadening those conversations to additional teachers, so we can get to all 253 teachers. In addition to that, we'd like to bring in Mr. Gus, Dr. Guske, who is a researcher in this area and a professor, so that he can also help send this message to spur our conversation and our talking and thinking about this. Not because we want to adopt every practice that he has, but we want to spur that conversation and spur that learning, because if you want to change your mindset, and if you want to have good conversation and grow as a learning organization, then you need to have people like this come in and give us some of the researches out there so that we can have these conversations. We're asking to spend this money out of our Title II grant funds. It's federal dollars that are earmarked for professional development. And, you know, we would send a teacher out to a professional development opportunity with Dr. Guske. It would cost hundreds of dollars, because you'd have to go to a national conference to see him. And this way, we're bringing him here, and every single one of our teachers and our administrators will experience that knowledge that he can bring to us. And then we're going to take that, and we're going to continue the conversations forward. And it is our, our hope to bring you some grade reporting recommendations by the end of the year. Not that we're going to implement them all next year. We, we promised the 10-point scale, and we promised to have a draft of the recommendations, but we said we needed to continue the work and finish it out. And it might be in draft pilot form, and we'll start to implement some of the practices, but it wouldn't be fully implemented until the fall of 2016. Make sure I have my date right. So can I answer any questions? Because I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
I'll, I guess I have a couple, but I'll just ask. For one, I think Rick made a good point last meeting when he brought this question up, and that is, what specific data is out there to support that this is the right way to go? Because I will say, I've, I've seen this now in a couple different forms. And I don't want to call it a sales pitch, because that's, that's not the way I feel about it. But as a pitch, it sounds like a good idea. But there's more than one way to skin a cat. So how do we know that this is the best way out there? And, and again, is, is there some sort of data to support that this is the way to go? This is the best thing for our kids? And the reason I ask is, we've been through a couple other programs in the past few years with somewhat mixed results. And change is always a good thing. We have to be moving forward. But there's been a lot of change. We're putting in a lot of new programs, all at the same time. This one, I see right up there, June 2015, for the board to accept the recommendation. But if we go ahead and spend the money to bring in Dr. Guske and communicate this out to our key communicators in our community, we've, we've taken the step, we're, we're past the point where we can go back in June and not accept the recommendations. We've, we're partially committing right now to going in that direction. So my question is, is there some, some kind of hard data that we could look at? I know we talk about studies and research, but I'm just a numbers person. I'd like to see those numbers, if they're there.
We can gather that for you. There's textbook upon textbook about this. So we've been, we've been studying those, those textbooks and that research. And Dr. Guske can certainly bring some of that for us. But we're, we're not saying that we're committing to his work. He's bringing the ideas forward that are in, that are published in the educational world about this so that we can have conversation about it, so that we can decide what's going to work in Potts Grove, what pieces of this are going to work, and how should we articulate this in a guidebook for our, our teachers and our educators? So we're not asking you to adopt anything. And if in June, we're not ready to adopt yet, because, because this is the timeline that we set out last April. So we, you know, we had to kind of try to put a timeline in place a year and a half out, then certainly we can delay that piece of it. But that was what we were charged to do, because I asked for two years and you said I could have one. Because if I could have two, I will take the two. Because this is a, a big undertaking. But at least, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to meet this timeline, and we can certainly bring you what we have. And then if we're not comfortable to adopt something at that point, then we're not. But we really feel strongly that just changing the, the grade scale, changing the numbers, that's, that's really not going to do anything except mask the, the issue. I mean, it doesn't matter if you're on a 10-point scale or a 7-point scale. If your teachers aren't using the same criterion, and we're not reporting out in the same manner, then there's so much variability that we're doing a disservice to our students. And, and we've known this for a while, but, you know, it takes time to align curriculum, align practices. And now we're aligning reporting practices, and this is, this is a really good thing for our kids. So otherwise, I would, I wouldn't be here talking about it with you.
I have a couple of comments that might turn into questions as well. And first, thank you for clarifying some of the differences, particularly between the elementary and the secondary. First comment is that, that I think that you're missing something in your purpose for grading. With all due respect, there's another purpose for grading, particularly at the high school level. And that is to, and I don't know, you know, I'm putting the broad idea out. I don't know what the, the correct wording is. But, but the purpose, another purpose for grading at the high school level is for our students to be as competitive as they can with other students in order to gain entry into college. And while grades aren't their only, the only measure that is used, it's a very important one. So one of my concerns about Dr. Guske's ideas, for example, is the notion that, that an A is equivalent to, to mastery beyond what is taught, which I read in his paperwork. And I found that a rather disturbing notion, because that would effectively turn all our A students into B students. So, or a lot of our A students into, into B students. And I don't think that's the way we want to go. That said, I, I, I went and, I did a real deep dive myself into this subject over the past week. And I've listened to countless hours of YouTube videos and some very, very enlightening information. I found out that there are quite a few schools out there who've been doing this in K through 8 for a very long time. Not nearly so many that have been doing it at the high school level. You know, Montgomery County, Virginia, Fairfax County, Virginia, the whole state of Hawaii, all in K through 8. Locally, OJR has it in K through 5, in addition to the schools that you mentioned. I personally agree that the grade report that you displayed versus what we do and tying to standards, particularly at the elementary level, which is the place where we lose our students if they fall behind, is a really, really good idea. I mean, if they fall behind at elementary, do they ever really catch up? And maybe not. So, so I like that idea a lot. I am concerned that our curriculum is still not finished if we're going to do standards-based grading. Think of the iterations back and forth between teacher and student in a world where, where a student doesn't move on until they complete, until they master whatever skill it is you're teaching. And, and, you know, are you just going to keep giving them back the same test? Also, think of 25 to 1 student-to-teacher ratios and, and how that's going to work practically. And I'd be interested in research that talks about class size as it relates to standards-based grading, because it seems to me that the bigger the class, the harder it is for a teacher to manage. And, and I might add that there was a federal government video I watched on YouTube that talked about the absolute requirement talked about the absolute requirement for teacher buy-in as part of any implementation of standards-based grading. And while I applaud the committee, that's just a small representation of the larger teacher body. And I, I also watched videos of teachers lining up at board meetings in force against standards-based grading. So I, it seems like a really big thing to me. So my answer to you about giving you two years, give you five years. Let's do it right. If we're going to do it, let's do it right, and take as much time as we need to do it right. And start small and not try and implement it across the board. I do agree that we need to unify our grading practices. I totally agree. You know, homework should count for X percent in every classroom, in the high school and in the middle school, et cetera, et cetera. But that's not standards-based grading. That's just unifying our grading practices.
Well, it's moving us toward that if we don't allow homework to skew the grade, and it's more about achievement. And we can also report out on homework in different ways, and we're looking at how could we do that, so that we could be more informative to parents and give them a more accurate picture of what their student is doing, and give the students a more accurate picture. And just to make one comment about, we're, we're trying to make our kids competitive. I get what you're saying, but by the same token, we want to make sure our kids have learned the material, so that when they do go off to college, the more important piece is that they're successful, that we've prepared them with the proper skills to be successful. And we're not inflating or saying that they're at a certain level and they're ready to take on a certain courses when they don't have those skills. So that's what, that's what we want to be very careful that we are doing, is to ensure that we're reporting that they have the skills. But by all means, we want our kids to shine, you know, above all the other students, because we're a great school district.
And I agree with that. The, the last thing I wanted to say is, I read through Dr. Guske's materials, and I personally...
...about using him as our trainer. I read his article about percentage grading, and, you know, he's a PhD, and, and I'm just an MBA. So, so in some respect, I defer, but in another, other respect, there were some, there, there was an entire section of his article that was based on a completely faulty premise. The faulty premise being that percentage grading didn't become common in the United States until the 1990s. And that's just wrong. I, I guarantee you, if I asked everybody in this room who's, who was educated before the 1990s, did they get percentage grades? The very large majority are going to raise their hands and say, yes. Oh, sure, maybe they got As, but the As were calculated by, by their, the average of their percentage grades. And I couldn't believe when I read that, that a PhD would make that kind of statement. And, and for me, when, when somebody is trying to persuade me to think in a different way, and they use faulty information, it undermines their credibility for me. And, and then the second thing that I found concerning about his ideas was, is now out of my head. So stay tuned. When I remember it, I'll, I'll share it with you privately. But I am concerned about, about moving forward with him. I also just don't think that his ideas are going to be completely in Pots Grove. I did watch some videos of him. There aren't that much out there. He is a very dynamic speaker. I imagine it would be a very engaging day for our teachers to have Dr. Guske present to us. But if we're not going to adopt his, his full scope of ideas, then, then maybe you can help me understand where you see the value.
Well, in, in our world, in the education world, we, we typically look at many researchers' work, and we have been reading Reeves and Wiggins, and there's all kinds of researchers, but they all come around these same concepts. But we, we believe that he can spur our teachers' conversation about this. And as I said, this is not to adopt his practices per se, but to get our teachers conversing and learning and talking together about the research and about what's out there, and then to make an informed decision collectively as our stakeholder group, our teachers, about what it is that they'll feel comfortable doing, and what we can do to accurately do the best for our students in, in giving them feedback.
I just had two comments. One was, I, I do like these other models that you showed us of the elementary level, because I think especially when you're new to school, when your children are young and you haven't, you know, especially with your first one and your second one, to have clarity of what your children need to know so that you can help them at home is, I think that's really important. And I do agree that our elementary school report card right now is not clear on, on what your child's being grading on, being graded on. When you go in and have your parent-teacher conference, they do, the teachers do try to explain to you where that grade, grade came from, but it's nice to have it written out. And I love these, "I can, I can do this, and I can do that," because it's a clear expectation.
I just wanted to piggyback that our teachers are asking for this change at the elementary level. We're not going to have them lined up in protest, let me tell you. They're, they're lining up, like, when are we doing this? What is taking so long? And we wanted to thoughtfully get our curriculum aligned, our instructional practices aligned, and we're working toward the assessment piece. So they'll be, I think they'll be welcoming this change.
And I support it for, for just the reason...
...about Matt is, I would like to see, an example, if we're, even when we're thinking about...
About doing this at the secondary level. I would like to see an example of a high school whose SAT scores were positively impacted by a change, because I think that that's a pretty objective measure of, you know, over time, you can look at a, a school's SAT scores, and yes, there are various things that factor in there, but that's a really huge, important thing for our students. And, and, you know, if that, if there was that kind of data, it would probably influence me much more positively than if it didn't really have any impact on SAT scores. And we have examples of schools that have been doing this for a long time in the K through 8. Those kids eventually bubbled up and took SATs, you know? I think that there must be somebody who thought about correlating the one with the other, but I couldn't find anything when I looked. So I'd be really interested.
Okay, so my second comment was on the consistency. I have three kids that are going through the school district, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one at the elementary school, and they've gone through many different teachers. And they're, all of our teachers are fabulous. They've all had really fabulous teachers. But my daughter's eighth-grade experience did not correlate at all with my son's eighth-grade experience. So she couldn't say, you know, if you learn this in algebra, you'll be, you know? There definitely is not a consistency. And I think that would also be really helpful for parents to know what to expect, how much homework grade, you know, weighs into the grades, how much the midterm, how much, should we really be worrying about our children really studying for midterms? Or is it more important for them to do all their homework? Things like that, just consistency across the board. And then communicating that out to parents. I think that's, you know, that's really important. If we have a consistent grading practice and then communicate it out to parents, that really helps. And, and I agree with Rick in, in that it takes as long as it takes, you know? I don't want to, I'd hate to say, push out something that's done halfway if it's not ready and it, the teachers aren't on board, and then it just fails, you know? It takes as long as it takes, and if you need more time to do it right, I would rather see it done right than done fast.
Dee, I took one step further. My daughter being in a high school, I went on the websites of the teachers and read the information that was brought home first day. Each teacher tells you what their class is, what the exam's worth, what the homework is worth, what it's, what everything is worth. And let me tell you, in the 10th grade alone, looking on the websites and everything, every class is different, even between math teachers of the same grade. Homework counts differently. Exam counts differently. Projects count differently. I think we need to first, and I think you agree, look at that, and within, I'm talking to high school, because I did, I went online, looked at the high school. That needs to be aligned. You, you can't, it's, it doesn't give you your experience through high school when everything's different. Everything counts different. Oh, gee, you know, homework was worth this in my science class, but it's only worth this and this. It needs to be more aligned. And I did look at it, and they are different. You can look right online and go on the teacher's pages, and it shows you right there on their page, what their classes, what their things are worth, and how much their homework is, and how, and if you read the first-day stuff that comes home, which I do, because my daughters will tell me everything, it's right there. So it is a little skewed. It's a little disheartening to see how different from class to class everything is rated.
Just a quick question. Whissee Hickon, which was the elementary report card example, one of them, what, is Whissee Hickon implementing this K through 12, or just...
I, I believe it's, we, we wouldn't do something that, we wouldn't do something like that in the secondary.
I mean, standard-based grading, period, not just, not that type of report card.
Well, I think there's a little confusion in that, at the high school level, we aligned to standards. We did that with the curriculum revision. We've aligned our instructional practices, okay? Like, for instance, in mathematics, we're, we're implementing the mathematical practices. Those are aligned to standards. The assessments, the teachers are writing common formative assessments aligned to standards. So that's standards-based. That, that in and of itself is standards-aligned. They're writing performance assessments with rubrics, and the rubrics say what a student should know and be able to do if they're proficient, or if they've mastered it, or if they're, you know, working toward it. They have, they use points typically in secondary, but it's the same concept. That's standard-aligned. Though, that's what we mean by standards-aligned at the high school level. We don't mean the, the same thing that you think at the elementary school level, where every little skill is on the report card and the, and the teacher would check off. It's, it's, it's never going to get to that level. We are trying to align to the standards, and we are trying to ensure that when we, when we do great, give a grade, that it's, it's saying what it is that we want to say, whether or not the student has mastered those skills. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. But Whissee Hickon's, what you saw would be at the elementary level, and they've had theirs in place for a while, because we looked at this about five or six, five years ago. I mean, we're, we're working...
I guess there was a positive point on that I wanted to mention. I, I do think it's a great idea, I completely agree, that we need this K through 5 soon. I like the concept. I just wanted to point out that when I was doing research a while back, to try and figure out what school districts in Montgomery County can we compare ourselves to, who are performing better, and possibly we could model best practice after. Because every time we looked at better-performing districts, it was, we, we talked about socioeconomic scenarios in those districts, and how we can't compare ourselves exactly to every district in Montgomery County, which makes sense. But Whissee Hickon was the one that kept bubbling up to the top as being a close comparison to Pots Grove. So I just wanted to point out that it might be something that they're doing, we talked about this a while back, that could be a good example of, of why. So I, I wanted to point that out. That's why I asked the question, to find out what the, was it just their elementary school that they had adopted the standards-based? Not that type of report card, but I think that type of report card would be great. And I don't think any parent would, would have an issue with getting that level of information about how their child was doing in school.
A couple of things that I heard I wanted to ask tonight. So bringing in Dr. Guske is a part of the broader recommendation?
Yeah, he's not a recommendation. He's to spur the conversation and the dialogue among our staff. And I'm going to invite the key communicators, the board members, and, I mean, there'll be plenty of room for parents if they'd like to, to come and hear him. So it's just, it's to spur the conversation, to broaden the awareness of different ideas, but we'll come to consensus on what will work in Pots Grove. We're not going to just adopt his thinking.
Okay. I, I guess I would like to hear from maybe some of the principals, what they, how they feel about some of this, and also what they think of the value of what the presenter's going to bring to Pots Grove. Any one of them.
Yeah. 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 Maybe that was a longer answer than you're looking for, but it's been, it's been good professional dialogue as, as the grading practices committee. Some of the middle school team members just presented on Wednesday morning, last Wednesday at our one-hour meeting. And it's good professional conversation to begin to step back and consider those things, instead of just being in a default mode, because that's the way we went through middle school.
Dave, I just want to say that that's not what he said, although I will say that I thought your interpretation was much more thoughtful and, and well-presented.
Well.
And I will point out that you have a PhD too, so perhaps that helped.
Does that mean you defer to my ideas? No, I'm only teasing. I, uh...
I might be more comfortable with that.
I'm just thinking, I, I remember reading it in the Gusky book, because I've been reading through Gusky, O'Connor, Warmley, you know, there, there are lots of books around about it, and I'm just thinking of the section that that was included in, where he talked about the, the various types, and I, that's the way I understood him, to talk about the 90s, because otherwise it's kind of a, it seems like kind of, I agree with you, otherwise it's kind of a foolish comment to say the teachers didn't average anything until the 1990s.
Probably said that because you smiled.
Must be an elementary thing. I need to go back to the way it was.
I could share, as a parent and as an educator, my children are in the Boyertown School District, so my daughter does have a standards-based report card. This year is actually their, their newest standards-based report card, so they've made some revisions to their report card. And it is very helpful to, to review that and see that as a parent. At the elementary level, we have started our grading discussions. We are not where the secondary student, I mean, teachers are and principals, but the teachers are excited about it, and it will take some time, because we do have to get our curriculum in line. And that piece about starting the discussion, and I think teachers need that. I think it's wonderful when teachers come to their own understanding, because they are bright people and they work hard in the classroom, and they're going to bring something to the table that necessarily that we do not as the administrators consider. So that time for them to have discussion and hear what, what's going on and what's best practice is a good move.
Thank you. Dave, can you give us an example of what Title II funds were used for in the past?
The, the concept of Title II is for improving teacher quality, and primarily it's been used for significant staff development initiatives. It might have been the reading program. It might have been the math programs at the elementary level. Whenever we're doing a major initiative and major push, anything that is geared towards improving teachers' knowledge base and improving their ability to, to perform in the classroom is what Title II can be used for.
Any other comments? So we have to decide what we want to do with... We, I heard other, other things Shelley asked for more time, which is another issue that needs to be addressed. So there's kind of a couple of things here, coupled together, that it takes more than three people to, to say something about, so we just need to kind of come to a consensus of what we want to do to move forward.
Do we need to make a motion to give her more time? Have we, have we, have, have we voted to have this implemented in a year, and therefore do we need to, to re-vote?
I, I think you voted to move to a 10-point scale, but then we had that timeline that's up on the screen there at the April meeting, and that's just what we had conversation about, but I don't recall that we voted on that timeline, so.
I would gladly make a motion to give you as much time as necessary to do it right, however long that is.
I think we can do that by consensus unless there's someone, it seems to be the consensus of the board, so I think the administration has their direction, and I would suggest probably keep them updated, meaning the board.
So April 1st, on our agenda here, not that we need to vote, we have a speaker coming in that has an expense attached to it. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, is there consensus as well to stick with this timeline for Dr. Gusky as a presenter on this day? We can't...
We're, we're ready to have him come and just spur the conversation. That's what we want. We want to start the conversation and get, give our teachers a chance to hear from someone other than us and the books we're studying. That's all.
And this is, this comes out of grant money. This is not coming out of the budget or anything like that. This is grant money that's being used to pay for this, and, and I just feel like we have to kind of trust your vision and Dr. Scher's vision for how you want to implement this. And if this is the person that you feel is going to be the best person to spur this conversation, and maybe pull some teachers out of their comfort zone, get them excited about something new and different, and then, especially if it's not impacting our budget, if it's coming out of those, you know, those Title II funds, that grant, then I think you should have the leeway to do that.
I just want to clarify, just so everybody's on board. Title II is part of the general fund budget, okay? It's a separate funding stream. We're allotted a certain amount of money each year for this purpose. It must be used for a designated purpose, and it's a case where if you don't use it after a certain period of time, you have to return it to the, to the federal government. But it is part of the general fund, so I don't want to misstate that.
Would it have any, sorry, would it have any tax?
Will have no tax impact.
Okay.
There is an opportunity cost in that you could use those funds for some other training, potentially, rather than, than the training that has been so designated. So while spurring the conversation may be a good idea, you, by, by committing to doing this, you crowd out any other potentially beneficial training as well.
We've, we've kind of thoughtfully put this into our, our comprehensive plan and our yearly focus areas, our goals and strategies. This has been built into what the curriculum department set forth this year, you know, based on the fact that what we had agreed to last April, so it's, it's earmarked there.
Everybody good? Ready to move forward? Okay. Section 3 is our public comment. I didn't have any forms for this evening. You did have a public, Mr. Parker? Sorry, it's kind of messy. Bill Parker?
I'm, I'm a little speechless. Good thing I typed my notes first, but it seems to me a cup of coffee was enough to spur a discussion or conversation. Now I guess the taxpayers have $12,000 to spend to spur conversation. Seems to me, if I may, Mr. President, it's a good time for a fairy tale. Once upon a time, there was a newly married couple looking to buy their very first house. Having heard about the great people in an area of Pennsylvania called the Pottsgroves, and about the great teachers that school district there had, they searched and found what they thought was the perfect home to start their family. Soon after moving in, the Joneses had a knock at their door. Who might that be, they wondered? And upon answering the door, found the sweetest older, the, the sweetest oldest, older couple bringing them a freshly-made cake. "Oh, how nice of you," Mrs. Jones said, inviting them in. Soon the Joneses and the Smiths were deep into conversation, when all of a sudden, Mrs. Smith started to tear up. Mrs. Jones, unaware of what she said to upset her, quickly apologized, but Mrs. Smith said, "It wasn't her fault. It's just that she gets so upset when she thinks about their predicament." For you see, as was the case with so many families in this wonderful area of Pottsgrove, the Smiths had moved in many years ago, made lifelong friends, raised their children, and soon retired. But now, living on a fixed income, they could no longer afford to live there. Why? Because of the unending, never-ceasing yearly tax increases. Well, once you know it, sure enough, soon, the Joneses' family started to grow, and so did their bills, including their taxes. But thankfully, it wasn't too late for them, unlike so many others, and they were, they were able to move to an area where the school board understood that there was only so much for the taking. Unfortunately, this is not a fairy tale. It is a reality of so many in this district. As I've said, I am a parent of a fifth grader. I want the best education for him and for all the students of Pottsgrove. I am also a taxpayer and continue to be perplexed that this board, as a whole, believes there is no bottom to the barrel, that the district can spend and spend regardless of what is available to spend, like $12,000 for a one-day speaker. I get that the state and federal government have cut back on their financial support, but you know what? You have to make do with what you have, just like every other citizen in school district does. Lastly, let me just say, I have spent the last two days in an elementary school in a local district. When I walked in on this past Monday for the first time, I was thrown back to the 1970s when I was in elementary school. The ugly tile, the cracks in the floors, sealed but not very appealing to the eye, the old-fashioned construction, but you know what? As I walked past classrooms and spoke to different teachers and students throughout the day, the last two days, there was genuine learning happening. They didn't have the most modern of everything, but they also realize they don't need to. Ladies and gentlemen, Pottsgrove can be both educationally and financially sound. It's time that you, as a board and administration, recognize that and put your foot down as the board, and start remembering that as per your policy, you are to be effective stewards of public resources.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Sure.
Just wanted to point out that the 12K question, though I'm not in favor of bringing Dr. Gusky in, is coming from federal funds and does not impact our budget or our taxes. So just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
And that is correct.
Right, Dave? Thank you. If we don't use it, we lose it.
Would like to announce that the board had an executive session before the meeting tonight to discuss a student issue, and we will also be holding an executive session after the meeting for personnel. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. A motion that we approve the minutes from 1:13:15?
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Move that we motion, we approve the monthly board workshop minutes from January 27th of 2015? Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Mrs. Grim, if you can. John. Mrs. Grim, we're receiving accounts for audit.
Okay. I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the payments and invoices in the amount of $6,169,885.80 for January 2015 as presented.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the treasurer's report for January 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Second.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. And with that, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I, I approve, I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
I want to amend the motion that we approve all the personnel. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Post.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you approve the budget transfers for January 2015 as presented.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Post.
I recommend that you approve the adoption of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015-16 as presented.
Let me just say, for public consumption, this is truly a preliminary budget. The school code requires that the directors adopt the budget by June 30th, so there'll be much work, but the Act I somehow perversely requires us to start with a budget in February, backed up from the primary election, and so the date floats every year, but we have to do it this week to keep the process going. But I want to make sure everyone understands that this is by no means a final budget. There'll also be another preliminary budget and a final budget.
Dave, will we be discussing exceptions underneath new business?
Yeah, it's, it's actually two, two components. The one is, the exceptions isn't, is a discussion item. The budget is purely a required action that the board take. If you'll recall, just to give you a highlight, high, high-level information, currently our budget shows a shortfall of approximately $2.5 million, of which $750,000 was planned, a planned use of our Peasars Reserve Fund. And we would be facing, if we, if we were to adopt, if everything stayed the same and we were to adopt our, a tax increase to the Act I index, we would still have an $841,000 shortfall. And our, if we were to adopt, or if we were permitted to apply for exceptions, and we were to raise the taxes to the fullest amount, we would still reflect a $393,000 budget shortfall, where we stand today. Very early in the process, but that's where we stand today.
Dave, remind me, does this take into account any state funding?
Given the, the transition with a new governor and a very difficult budget at the state level, what we have incorporated in the budget at this point in time is level funding from the state. The only increases that we're projecting are in the area of the state's contribution to the retirement system. The governor, the new governor has said that he wants to support public education as much as he possibly can. However, it's going to be a very difficult budget season this year, so we have not incorporated any increase in funding at this point.
What is the tax increase that's in this preliminary budget?
Right now, I'm not showing any tax increase. I'm showing the deficit. If we were to increase to the index, it would be 2.4%, and if we were to increase to the index plus exceptions, I, I believe the number would be 3.56%. This is not committing to any increase level. It's just keeping the process rolling. We, once we decide on the budget, then we can talk about whether the board supports applying for the, the exceptions.
And a motion to second.
I'll make the motion. And I'll second it, since there's a 0% tax increase in the preliminary budget.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, I recommend that you award the bid for the Pottsgrove Middle School cooling tower upgrade to Shannon A. Smith as presented.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into a sponsorship agreement with Exeter Orthodontics as presented.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Post.
I recommend that you approve the general administrative services budget for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Post.
I recommend that you approve the curriculum instruction professional development services budget of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit as presented.
I move to lump all the intermediate unit budgets into a single vote.
Second.
Can they do that, Mark? They, they still have to do their tally sheet?
Yeah, you just go for all of them on the one motion.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Post.
I recommend that they approve the payment, that you approve the payment of invoices listed above for the construction project.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the mentors as presented.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the high school course proposals for 2015-16 as presented.
All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into a contract with Dr. Guski for professional development on April 1st, 2015 as presented.
Second.
Any questions?
Can I say something before I cast my vote?
Sure.
Mr. Parker, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit. You made one comment there and I agree with, what I was, should have said earlier. I think we can spur this convers, just between, this is me speaking, I think we can spur this conversation on, with our staff, with our development staff, with our curriculum staff, in a group of people, our teachers, our parents, our faculty, without having to have Mr. Guski come in. That being said, I've been off from work for a while and like Rick, I've looked up a lot of his work. It is interpretive, but I don't think a lot of his practices are what's needed here at Pots Grove. So just before I vote, I just wanted to, I agree that I think this conversation can be spurred on with our intelligent, with our smart and bright teachers and people we have here without having Mr. Guski come in. That's just.
Any other comments? So I guess my only 11,500 Title II funds, grant money, use it or lose it. Our administration came to us and said they have professional development opportunity, and we're going to get lambasted by our friends. But given the opportunity to interject into the conversation a professional, when, when I hear that, our principal saying that our teachers are excited about something and are asking for something, hearing an employee is saying, please bring someone to train me, show me, and I, I see shaking their head, please, how can we, now we're not going to take any more comments.
Train somebody on something that hasn't been done. You're not going to lose it if you use it somewhere else.
You had your turn to talk, Mr. Parker. So with that, I'm, I'm going to vote to approve the expenditure. And I will say this with the caution, I, I don't want to see a resounding amen to what Mr. Guski proposes in his thesis or his ideology, because that will put us on a path of wasted time and energy. So as long as we continue to remain thoughtful and make sure that what we're taking on is a fit for Pots Grove and affording our administration the time and the energy that they've put into this and the respect that they need, granting them more time. With that, I'm going to motion that we approve this. I'm going to cast my vote to approve it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. opposed?
No.
Moving on, I recommend that you approve the 2015-16 Pots Grove School District calendar as submitted.
So moved. All those in favor?
Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, questions? Any questions?
Sorry.
I apologize.
I did have one question about the calendar, and it's a similar question to one I asked last year, but I guess I, I want to ask if it makes more sense to, to put President's Day ahead of the extra days at the end of the year. I know, I know last year it wasn't even on the calendar and, and that we, we asked to have it added in, but, but I just, and, and obviously it wouldn't matter this year since we haven't had any snow days, I don't think. Oh, no, we did have one snow day, right? So, so I think that the, the, there, there's, there is certainly a, a, a number of people in the community who would rather not have school go longer, but would rather lose the holiday in February if they had to choose between the two things. So, so I'm asking the question, and I may be a day late and a dollar short on this one, so maybe I'm asking prospectively for the following year, but I think that, personally, I think that that's something that would warrant consideration, so.
Did you take though to what?
Yeah.
So Rick, what you're saying, maybe not for this year, but for the following calendar?
Yeah. It's late, and, 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 you know, what I'm suggesting is it should be before 6/6 or 6/16, whatever the date is, rather than, rather than third in, in priority. Because if we only have one school day, then the result would be that the school year would end two days sooner. And the way it is now, you're sure to be losing a couple, at least one day or maybe more at the end of the year. So that's what I'm suggesting, but I'll, I'll vote on this calendar as it is now.
Sorry, Rick, are you talking about the priority of makeup days? Okay, okay, okay. So you're not saying go to school on President's Day, you're saying put that higher in the priority list of makeup days?
Well, this year we would go if, if, if.
Right, right, right.
Right.
But I mean, like, not, not as a general calendar day, but to move that up in the...
Right, no, I'm not saying eliminate President's Day, no.
Okay.
I'm just saying that if we have to choose between the priority of extending the school year or losing President's Day, I think that there's a lot of people in the community would rather the one versus the other. Granted, the minute you change it, then you'll find out about the members in the community who would prefer the other day versus the one that you chose, so.
But to point out that that's also still, that would still be a three-day weekend, not for teachers, but for students, it would still be a three-day weekend, right? Because there would still be a, there's an in-service day on the 12.
Yes.
So, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Discussion items?
Well, we had an A page, I recommend that you approve the resolution for residency hearings as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
And our first discussion item is a bond sale. Is Jamie here tonight or you're doing?
No, due to the weather last evening, Jamie was double booked tonight, so John Frye from PFM is here. He was the gentleman who came and presented our, our financing plans at our first meeting in January, and he has some very pleasant information to share with you tonight.
Good evening, everyone. In front of everybody is a blue-covered handout that I'll walk through. Again, as an executive summary, we, we took bids today for a bond sale for the second step of your high school financing project, and the results are very good. Interest rates remain very low, and so I think you'll, you had very good results. So in that blue-covered handout, you know, a couple, the first couple pages show the interest rates remain very low. Pages three through five is the district's credit rating report. When you go out to the public markets for a bond issue, you need a credit rating from Standard and Poor's. They reaffirmed your double-A credit rating, which is very good and very strong. We'd like to thank Mr. Nestor for his solid work and excellent work in getting together with S&amp;P and reviewing the financials of the district, and it's quite good, and having that high credit rating allows you to get then very low interest rates when you borrow money. So on page six and seven are the summary of the bids that we received on the internet auction today. Janie Montgomery Scott provided the lowest overall bid to the district, and that'd be the one we would recommend adopting tonight. On page seven, you see they, between Janie Montgomery Scott and Roosevelt Cross, those two firms battled back and forth during the auction process each time lowering their rate, each time lowering the cost to the district. So it was good competition among those two investment firms. Page eight is a summary that we've shown before, the color-coded three-step process, if you will, of the financing of your high school project. In the blue is what was locked in last year, last February, March, about $15 million was in the blue. Today, what we're locking in is step two in the red, and I would like to note that the overall, in column nine, at the bottom there, has $11.5 million of debt service payments over the life of the bonds. That is about a million dollars less than what we were estimating over the last several months. So because interest rates have stayed low, because of your good credit rating, we're seeing these good results. On page nine is the detail of the, of the bond issue. Again, you'd be borrowing $9,535,000. The interest rates are in column three and four on page nine, with the yield in column four ranging from 0.4% to 2.4%. So again, very low interest rates. Page 10 is the sources and uses of funds. Again, the bonds will come in, in the middle of the page on March 17th is when the bonds will settle. The monies will be deposited in your construction account and paid for cost of issuance, and the yield of the issue in the, in the center there, 2.07% is what the district is borrowing at today for their nine and a half million dollars. So much lower than you could have expected a year ago or even two months ago, so very good news. And the, the rest of the, the next page or two is just for your, for your records of your draw schedule and your debt summary. And again, this is the step two of the high school financing project, and we also have then two other refinancing bond issues for you this year that will be back as soon as potentially next month to refinance and to try to save some money going from higher rates to lower rates, but tonight is just this new money financing project. All the documents and everything is in order. The resolution was prepared by Fox Rothschild and reviewed by them as well, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The action that would be required of the board to go forward, I handed you the borrowing resolution. The reason that always comes at late hour is you heard the auction didn't end until sometime, I guess, early this afternoon.
Right, in the lunch hour.
And so let me try to, I promised Justin I would outline this briefly. The resolution does authorize the borrowing of $9,535,000. Throughout the resolution, it covers a number of items, including the fact your representation that this is for federal tax purposes, tax interest-free, you make certain representations. You do pledge the full faith and credit of the school district to repay it, which is essentially the, the taxing authority of the school district. The bonds, in case you're interested, will be sold in $5,000 increments, up to the $9, I can never get the number right in my mind, $535,000. The resolution then goes on to authorize the officers to sign the appropriate documents. I kidded earlier, your secretary in president will probably have Carpal's Syndrome by tomorrow morning. And the other things you may have, be of some interest is that the interest we pay semiannually, if I'm correct, John, if I read in here, the call date, the earliest you can call the dons is 2021?
2020, five years.
Yeah, five-year call provision. What that means is that you, you cannot call the bonds or redeem them for a five-year period, and that partly is what supports the interest rate in the sale to the bondholders. After that, you can do a refinancing, depending where you are and what the law is at that time, as you're going to do two coming up, it would be a similar issue, and, and those we had to wait for the call provision. That's always an issue of some interest to boards. Append it to the resolution is the schedule of payments, which synopsizes what we've already gotten from PFM. So if you're, and, and the schedule B is the form of bonds, and I would respectfully suggest if you have a bad case insomnia tonight, you could read the, the form of bond. So the appropriate resolution is to, the appropriate motion is to approve the bond resolution, and then I'll have the officers sign the appropriate documents for settlement, which is, I understand is scheduled for March 17th.
That's correct.
I just had one question. You said that it's gonna, that this, thanks to the favorable rates, it's actually going to cost a million dollars less than you previously anticipated. And that's over, that's a million dollars over the life?
That's, yes, over the life of the, of the loan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as it's been submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot.
John, before you leave, they, they give me things in big print because of my advanced age, and I have a big note here, I'm not to leave without a purchase agreement with you and the school board so I can get the district to sign. Dave has it, or?
There's, there's five copies that I gave to Mr. Nestor.
Okay. Happy travels, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, Dave, did you want to talk about the tax abatement request?
In, in your notes and notes, I provided you with some backup information. Over the last few months, we have provided some tax relief for a property that Upper Pots Grove Township had purchased and declared as open space. Subsequent to that, the township contacted me and notified me of another parcel that they had purchased. A little bit different scenario here in that when they purchased it, the, it was right at the transition between, it was the end of June, so the tax bill went to the prior owner. As a result of that, they're saying they didn't have knowledge of the delinquency, they didn't pay the tax, and they're asking the board to consider waiving the penalty on it. And they're also asking the board to consider waiving the fee we paid Portnoy on, for collecting, attempting to collect the, the fee. So it's open for discussion. This isn't something I would recommend doing, but I'm willing to entertain the board's discussion.
Dave, could you tell me the fees, the total amount for the fees that we're talking about?
It's $44.81. It's a notification fee that Portnoy charges when they write the, the initial letter telling them that they haven't paid their taxes, but that's something that the district has already expended.
Question. So the total amount we're talking about here is 160-something dollars?
Approximately 172, yes.
So is it a slippery slope thing that causes you to feel that we shouldn't do this?
Yes. If a residential homeowner would approach us with the same request the last thousand times that they did it, I said no.
My question, isn't this something that's, you said that they weren't aware, it was just that tax time, isn't this something that at settlement, it is discussed, and it's the settlement company who gets paid, his responsibility to say, okay, these taxes are due from this date to this entity? So really, Upper Pots Grove didn't miss it, whoever was doing their settlement is the one that kind of made this mistake. And I agree with you, I don't think that we should set a precedent here by, I know it's, the money's not the issue, it's the precedence of, we say, okay, well, you know, forgive them. I, I agree with you, I think it's a slippery slope, we don't, I'm just curious how at settlement, because I know when I go to settlement making a house, believe me, every cent is accounted for by date, you know, by midnight this night, so, okay.
So then how did this happen? I'm not sure I understand it. There was a bill sent to a previous owner after the sale?
I don't have the exact dates, but let's say the, the transaction took place on June 26th, the bills went out on July 4th. They went to the prior owner because the transaction didn't change the ownership in time to notify the tax collector. The new, the old prior owner didn't reply to the bill.
To John's point, it just seems like safeguards should be built into their process to prevent this from happening. So I, I mean, I'd like to extend the hand of friendship to, to one of our townships, but, but it doesn't even seem like they're liable for the money, isn't it, the previous owner?
No, it's, the tax... No, it's, the tax bill was for the subsequent fiscal year, the July first to June thirtieth of the subsequent year.
One hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. The stamp was forty-four cents to send.
Forty-four dollars.
No, the stamp to send the request. You know, I'm not inclined to waive it. We weren't given the same reciprocity on any of our fees a couple of months ago. And I know it's a different taxing body, but if you want to brag about zero percent tax increases, while we have to cut or look to cut certainly one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents, it's not going to make or break either one of these two organizations. So I'm not inclined to do it.
Well, then, no actions required, I'll just die for a motion then, assuming there's not a motion.
Okay, moving on to the third item that we forgot to put on here, which is the exceptions conversation.
Right. As indicated before, every budget year is a difficult budget year, but this budget year, there's a lot more questions because of the transitioning in governmental leadership in Pennsylvania and the status of the state budget. Typically, I come here and say that applying for the exceptions provides the board with the most flexibility should an unknown circumstance happen. This year, due to that, the large question marks on state funding, I would be hard-pressed to recommend not applying for the exceptions because we don't know for certain that we're going to get the same amount of revenue that we have gotten. Given that in order to get to the index, we're currently looking at cutting eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars from the budget, the prospect of loss, further loss of revenue or other expenditures increasing could put us in a precarious situation. Not saying that raising taxes to the index plus exceptions is not a precarious situation, but it would allow us the opportunity, allow you the opportunity as a school board to evaluate how deep the cuts need to go. Not whether there should be cuts, but at some point, it may get distasteful. And if you don't have the flexibility, the cuts will need, still need to be made. So my recommendation is typically to provide yourself with the most flexibility so that down the road, we can decide whether or not there's any need to take advantage of those items. But we need to have that decision tonight so that we can advertise that we're doing that and apply for the exceptions by March fifth.
Traditionally, just give me one second. Traditionally, we have always applied for these exceptions, and whether or not we've used them or even come close. And last year, we did not, we applied for exceptions and we were underneath our index. Two point four percent is a high tax increase. And, you know, I think at some point, we have to draw a line. And I'm motioning this year that we not apply for exceptions and work within our index.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions?
I just had a question, a couple of questions for Dave. What, so, I know that it's possible that we reduce the funding, that we get reduced funding from the state, right? And I know that we have a teacher's contract coming up. This refinancing that they talked about this evening, when, you know, the savings that we get from that, when, does that apply to this budget as well?
The refunding would likely affect the August payment on this bond issue. So that would reduce the, would generate a savings in August. But that, the full savings on the refinancing is taken in that year. So let's say, and I forget which one is coming up first, the smaller one or the larger one, but let's just say it's the larger one. And let's say there's four hundred thousand dollars of savings. That gets us through the next year, but when we're sitting here next year at this time, there'll be a four hundred thousand dollar hole plus whatever increases in costs are incurred next year. So typically, you try and use one-time revenues for one-time expenditures. Could it be used to offset the budget? Yes. But then we'll have further, more difficult conversations at this time next year, because instead of an eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollar shortfall, we might be looking at a one point two million dollar shortfall.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, your point is noted, but in addition, there's seven hundred thousand dollars in the general fund from the surplus from last year that hasn't been committed to anything. And there's also potentially one point five million dollars that'll be returned to the general fund from the savings on our insurance fund totaling two point two million dollars. And then in addition to that, there's four hundred thousand dollars, or maybe a little less, that we got this year from the PlanCon reimbursements totaling two point six million dollars. And while I grant you, Dave, the concern is noted, if we use that money in its entirety to pay for continuing budget costs, that we put ourselves in a hole in the following year. But I have to think that somewhere in between the two point six million dollars and zero are some funds that we can use to lower our tax increase this year. So I personally don't think we should apply for exceptions.
Dave, are there any other unknowns out there besides the state budget and the refinancing?
There are certainly unknowns. One of our biggest unknowns is our tuitions, whether they be charter school tuitions or special education tuitions. They fluctuate drastically day-to-day. So we have certain amounts in the budget, which we'll continue to monitor till the end of the year. If they go down, we'll recognize some savings. If they go up, we may have some challenges. And then there's also the school-based access program, which the state has used a new vendor for the last couple of years. The result of that has been a significant reduction in what school districts have earned for performing medically-related services to special education students. If that further reduces or goes away, there could be more there. We haven't gotten any of our grant allocations yet for IDEA, which is a special education, federal special education funding, or Title I or Title II budgets for the upcoming school year. So they have an impact. There could be pension reform legislation, I mean, there's a lot of variables. We don't know what we don't know yet.
So I'm very proud of the work that this board did last year in keeping taxes as low as we did. And I think, I agree with Justin that two point four is higher than we want to go. However, I am worried about all the unknowns. Like, I worry about the state funding. There's a lot of promises, but we have no history with this governor and how he's going to interact with the legislature. We have a teacher contract coming up, I worry about that. And while it does look like we have plenty of money and we should be fine, I do worry about tying our hands at this point with all of these unknowns and then getting to the end and saying, we wish we would have, because now we have to cut programs, we have to cut services and things like that. So making it clear, I definitely, I, I think that what we did last year was reasonable. I would like to see less than that this year, but I don't feel comfortable at this time tying our hands because I worry about cuts to programs and hard choices and tying our hands at this point. We can definitely go back after this whole budget process and, you know, vote for the low tax increase. I just worry, I never want to say, I wish we had. I never want to make a vote that's going to tie our hands based on incomplete information. And I feel like right now, I can't make a definitive vote. I don't feel like I have enough information that I can make a definitive vote. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go vote against your resolution. So, no offense, I-
I, I'm, and then it's in court, I don't want to raise things any more than we have to. But this is a, this is a non-commitment for us. We're not obligated to use it. So I'm leaning towards applying for it. That's my personal feeling.
I have the other side of the coin. I, you look at it as your hands being tied. I look at it as putting us to task. I think we will work harder if we know that we have a number. If we know we have something to fall back on, you know, it bothers me, I don't think we'll work hard enough. I feel that if we don't vote for any exceptions, which I will vote for, I'm voting no, we put ourselves, all of us, we put the board, the administration, the district, the taxpayers, everybody to task to make it like we did last year, make it work without knowing in the back of your head, oh, well, you know what, if we can't make it, it's no big deal, we have this to fall back on. I don't want that. I want to be put to task, and I want to make it so we make it without, in the back of our head, there's a safety net. Because people's nature is not going to work that hard if there's no safety net. Oh, well, we have a safety net, so if we're, if we're at two point nine or two point eight or three point one, we're good, because we have that safety net. Let's put our heads to the ground, and I'm not for cutting programs or pay-to-play or anything like that, which has never been brought up. I'm for putting us to task, getting out there, doing what we did last year, and making it work. And that's, that's how I look at the coin.
John, I just wanted to clarify, it's a yes vote if you're against the exceptions.
We have a motion in a second to not apply for exceptions. All those in favor of not applying for exceptions? I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
Not in the same order as I usually, used to have, Mr. Kofel. No. Ms. Scrim?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Cherica?
No.
Mr. Faulkner?
No.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Five for the, the motion passes.
One other motion I would like to put on the table for the board to consider tonight is, we're in the middle of a high school renovation project, and one thing that we have kind of pushed for really hard over the last couple of years is, we've been really hitting the capital reserve fund pretty hard without putting anything back into it in the middle of it, and there's a lot of unknowns with the high school project when things come up. What I would like to motion tonight is that we suspend all capital projects for the next year and revisit capital projects in the next budget season.
When you say suspend, you don't mean suspend projects that are in, already in process?
No, non-emergency capital projects. So for instance, if the boiler breaks, of course, that needs to be fixed. But maybe right now is not a good time to replace backstops, goalposts, re-sod the football field, you know, those types of, buy a tuba, those types of things, items.
So you're saying only absolutely necessary capital projects? I guess I want to make sure that your language is clear.
That's correct. Necessary capital projects, you know, the asphalt's coming out of the ground, you know, it's a hole and needs to be fixed, those things of that nature.
My question would be, who gets to pick what's necessary?
Well, the administration has always come to us with what's, needs to be done. And at that point, I'm not saying that they wouldn't suggest it, I'm saying that we need to pull back and be a little bit more prudent over what we're approving and not approving. And right now, again, if the roof were to fall in, of course, that needs to be fixed, but novelty things at this point, right now, we probably need to kind of rein in, in the middle of a major project and spending.
Do we have any input from the facilities? Who usually requests the capital?
Well, at the current time, we have Craig Bolts, our interim facilities director, working with the administrators to identify what potential needs are for capital projects. And we go through a process, and then he brings that forward to Dave and I and Bill. And then we review all of those things, and then we prioritize them in a priority order, and then that's when we present them back to the board. That's typically with the process that we follow.
To my knowledge, Craig has gone around and he's met with the, with the various stakeholders in the district. I'm not aware of anything that is currently mission-critical, that is being presented. And given the fact that we're going to be hopefully hiring a new permanent facility manager soon, it's going to take him a while to get his feet under him and develop a multi-year plan anyway. So if we're looking for things for this summer, I'm not sure that he's going to have a lot of stuff that's going to be ready for him, but we'll expedite the review of things that the principals have submitted and bring that out to you as part of the budget process. But I'm not aware of anything major that we haven't already started the process on.
I think Justin's motion piggybacks on the discussion we had a few months ago as to what to do with the budget surplus of seven hundred thousand dollars. And the administration wanted us to further fund the capital project fund based on the fact that some two million dollars of that fund is being held in escrow due to the high school project for the next couple of years. And- being held in escrow due to the high school project for the next couple of years. And at that time, we decided not to put the $700,000 in the capital fund, or at least to delay making that decision until later in the budget year. And so, my feeling is that this lines up, Justin's motion lines up with a need for us to be much tighter on our capital spending, especially in the next couple of years, while this money is in escrow. And obviously, we have to do what we have to do. There's no, you know, something, which we just approved a Chiller project, you know, we have to fix that. And so I think that that's the distinction that's being made here, is to only do the stuff that we have to do for the next little while, and I agree with it.
Correct. Any other comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any other new business? Answers to previous questions? No? Okay, with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everybody.